A little bit more. Wanted to note that our last item, the development agreement for Emory Station West for the transit center is -- will not be heard tonight. So if you're here for that, you have to wait. Meanwhile, we'll be talking about the 3800 San Pablo Mixed Use Project.
Chair Kumlee, I have to recuse myself from this item because I live within 500 feet, but as it is my primary residence, I will stay in the chamber as a member of the public. Thank you.
So, good evening again. This is 3800 San Pablo Mixed Use Project. It's a readaptive use of the Mass building as we know it, as well as an addition of residential project. If you may recall, the commission looked at this project at a study session in February of this year. So now it's here for your consideration for approval. So as you know, this is the project location. It kind of bounds what we call Star Intersection. And this is the neighborhood context. This is the Lane Splitter Cross. This is Avalon, the senior center. This is actually an Oakland residential building on, actually, Appgar. This building is the Salon Building, which has -- this site has been approved for a mixed-use building a few years ago, and this site will be developed. We have been talking with the developer, and we are expecting a building permit within a few months. So to that extent, I wanted to show you what is going to be going in there. So this is the Adeline Street elevation of the 39th Street, and this is the 39th Street elevation. And the heights of this building vary from 30 feet to 49 feet. So this is just for context, and I bring it especially because Commissioner Cardoza had mentioned that this would be useful for the commissioners to be reminded of. As you very well know, the site is partially located in Oakland, but Oakland has ceded jurisdiction to Emoryville. So Emoryville is responsible for both the planning as well as building permits. Any public improvements which lie in Oakland, for that, the applicant would have to go to Oakland and get encroachment permits from Oakland and permission from there. So this is the site plan. Like I'd mentioned, it's a reuse of the Mass building, which is about 25,000 square feet, and that would be used for commercial uses. And the parking lot next to it, that will be developed with a two-level garage and 105 fore-end units. So this is, again, just to get you oriented, this is 39th Street, San Pablo, MacArthur, and Adeline right here. So this is basically the footprint of the Mass building, and this Adeline Square will stay as it is, obviously, because the footprint is not changing. And later down the road, I'll show you the landscape plan for this plaza. Otherwise, the first floor will be developed with a variety of uses. At this point, the applicant does not know -- has not -- does not have tenants, but is looking for potential uses to be group up, grocery store, and other retail users as well. So this, again, is a little bit of close-up of the site plan. So you have the garage here, and this is the second level of the garage. The second level -- the first level of the garage will be used for commercial parking, and the second level would be for residential parking. The second level also has bike lockers for 30 -- that will accommodate about 30 bicycles. Looking at the floor plan again here, you have the residential lobby along 39th Street, and this is the recycling reuse areas. And the way this circulation would work, let me just go back, is this would be the commercial entry. It would also occur on MacArthur/Appgar, whereas the residential entry would be separate, and it'll go up the ramp from here. The arrows that you see in black are the -- is how the traffic would move to the site, and the red arrows are how the traffic will exit the project site. The first residential level, this is on the podium, so this -- on each floor, there are 21 units, and each floor will have one four-bedroom unit, four two-bedroom units, three what are called nested one-bedrooms, three nested studios, and nine studios. So these are the studios which are lined up here. The four-bedroom is here. These are the two-bedrooms. And then two-bedrooms are here, and one-bedroom here, and these are the nested studios and one-bedroom. And I'll show you floor plans in a bit to explain what this nested concept is. On each floor also, you'll have 21 bicycle spaces for residential users, which are located And then the residential levels, two to five, pretty much follow the same pattern upwards. And this is the unit mix. So studios are a little less than 50%, and two-bedrooms are, like I mentioned, actually this is about 20%. So these are the floor plans. This is a studio floor plan, and this is the nested studio and one-bedroom. So what's happening here is that this is, per code, considered to be a studio, because it does not meet the requirements of a bedroom by building code. For example, it doesn't have a window. But the actual space would allow accommodation of a bed. So to that extent, it is very different from a typical studio, which is, as you can see here. And the sizes are pretty much similar. I think it's about, let me, can't recall. Yeah, it's 590 and 520, so there's not too much difference. This is the floor plans for two-bedroom, which is a little under 1,000 square feet, and four-bedrooms, which is about 1,600 square feet. At the roof level, they are proposing a roof deck about a little over 700 square feet, which will include tables and, you know, be the tables and barbecue space. These are the sections. So as you can see, there are two parking levels, and then you have five residential levels, and the maximum height is 75 feet at this point. These are some of the elevations. I'm going to let the applicant talk more about the design and the skin and the design philosophy. I'm just going to show you the pictures here. We did, as -- these are the landscape now. They, as part of the project, two trees along 39th Street will be removed, and there's a dead tree here, which is also going to be removed. The remaining trees, they'll all remain -- will stay as they are. As a part of the landscape plan, they will be installing six new street trees, which are in the red -- red in color, so about four on 39th, and two along Adeline. And again, the treatment of this plaza, I'm going to let the applicant talk in detail about what they're proposing here, which includes tables, bicycle racks, festival lightnings. I think there's a sculpture as well. I would like to point your attention to this rain garden. This is not the part of the project. It's being shown here for illustrative purposes, because this is going to get built essentially by the city. And this is what the San Francisco Estuary Partnership is proposing along San Pablo, from, starting from Oakland down to Richmond and the town of City of San Pablo as well. So each city has their own segments, and the funding is by the grant that they would give to the city. So the design and the construction will be done essentially by the city. And the city council, it will be approving the final design. This is about 33% city drawings, but it's expected that they will be looking at it next month, in a month or two. As part of this project, the applicant will be required to maintain this rain garden. They are not involved in either design or construction, but since it will be an amenity to the project, a condition of approval requires them to maintain the project. In terms of your, if you have any comments regarding the rain gardens, you're welcome to give that to staff today, and we will be forwarding that to the council. But since this is the public right of way, this plan itself will not come to the commission again. And so this would be opportunity to give any comments regarding the design, which we would forward to the city council. So as part of this project, we did some photo simulations. These were the various viewpoints. And these simulations were part of your staff report. What I'm going to be showing you today is ones which have been updated, and I think Charlie sent you these updated versions earlier this -- earlier today via email. And so if you have not seen it, I'm just going to run through them real quick. So this is the viewpoint before. This is after. This is viewpoint two. This is after. This is along 39th. Adeline. This is after. This is along 39th. This is on Oakland side, Appgar. And this is the rain gardens right there. So in terms of conformity to planning regulations, the site falls, the base zone is the mixed use with residential south. There are three other overlay districts. One is neighborhood retail, transit hub overlay, as well as pedestrian priority overlay. In terms of use classifications, multi-unit residential is allowed by right, and commercial uses as yet are not identified. Potential uses such as group up, grocery in retail, they are, some of them are allowed by right, some require conditional use permit. But as the site is over one acre, the entire project requires a conditional use permit for all the uses proposed. In terms of residential density, the base is 85 units per acre, with the bonus density going up to 100 units per acre. The proposed density is 96. Therefore, the project requires a conditional use permit, which means it needs to qualify for bonus points, and the bonus points required for density is 73. FAR, the base is two. Bonus base, bonus FAR is three. Proposed is 2.4. So the bonus points required for the proposed FAR is 24. All the calculations are outlined in your staff report, so I'm not going to repeat the calculations here. Height, the base height is 55. Bonus height is 75. They're proposing 75, and therefore, the required bonus points is 100. As I mentioned in the study session a few months ago, it is not necessary to earn separate bonus points in each category. The category in which the maximum points are required is height, where the applicant requires 100, and therefore, that is what the project requires, that is 100 bonus points. So how are they going to be achieving those 100 bonus points? One of the categories is neighborhood center. If the commercial space within the project is located in our neighborhood retail overlay zone, and at least one commercial space is 30 feet depth with a ceiling height of 12 feet, and it provides for vent shaft adequate for a kitchen flue and a grease interceptor, then the project is eligible for the full 35 points. And this project does include all this, and therefore, we believe that it does qualify for this category. If the project were to exceed the California Energy Code by 20%, then it qualifies for the entire 35 points. The applicant has made that commitment to exceed by 20%, and there's a condition of approval that memorializes this commitment and will be verified during the building plan check, building plan check for this project. So in that sense, under this category, it will earn the full 35 points. Finally, the Mass building is a significant structure, and our regulations state that if the project entails adaptive reuse of the entire structure, then it qualifies for the full 35 points. And that is what the applicant is doing, and therefore, it does qualify for 35 points. So adding all three together, the project earns a total of 105 bonus points, and therefore qualifies for the bonus height, density, and FAR. In terms of parking, the transit, like I'd mentioned earlier, it, the project lies in the transit hub overlay, which allows elimination of all required parking to, parking not to, to zero with a conditional use permit. So the staff report kind of extensively talks about how all the calculations were made, so I'm just going to present the required and the proposed to make it simple. And if there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer if you have regarding calculations of this or any other calculations in the staff report. So the required residential is 61 to 67 spaces, plus 13 to 14 guest spaces. They're proposing 52, so it requires a use permit for parking less than the minimum. And so there's a shortfall of nine spaces. For the commercial, we look at two scenarios. One, under which there is no restaurant use, because the parking ratios are different for restaurant vis-à-vis other commercial uses. So under scenario one, it is 16 to 26. And the scenario two, which includes 5,000 square foot of maximum restaurant use, then it's 20 to 33. What they're proposing is 42 spaces on the first level for commercial purposes. And just to let you know that on the first level, it will also include 13 guest parking, guest residential parking spaces. So the project requires a use permit for commercial parking that exceeds the maximum, and exceeding, it's exceeding by nine extra spaces. Bicycle parking, the required residential is three short-term and 105 long-term. What they're proposing is 105 bicycle spaces, which is 21 on each floor, which is basically each unit has, is, each unit has one bicycle parking space on their floor. In addition to that, they are also providing bike lockers for 38 bicycle spaces at the parking level. The required commercial is two to three short-term spaces and two to three long-term spaces. And what they're proposing is 10 short-term on San Pablo and Adeline Street. So this meets the short-term requirements of both commercial and residential spaces. A traffic report was prepared for this project, and the report recommends a total of 15 short-term spaces and eight to 10 long-term spaces for commercial patrons and tenants. And so this has been included as a condition of approval. So ultimately, even though this is more than what our requirements say, the traffic report's recommendations mentions some, a different number, and we are going to go with that. In terms of loading, so what they are proposing is onsite loading space here, and also a loading space on 39th Street. So the way it would work is for residential loading would occur, as you may recall, this is the residential lobby. So this is where the residential loading, loading would occur. As far as commercial is concerned, it would occur within the garage. As you can see, this is rather tight, and to further discussions with our traffic consultant and as well as with the applicant, the way we resolve this is that if these parking spaces during loading areas are to remain vacant, then the commercial, it would, it would meet the commercial requirements. And the way, the way, so a truck would come in, and this is the way the needs of different retail tenants would be met. The traffic report also mentions that in case, I mean, like I'd mentioned, we do not know exactly what the tenants are going to be. So in event that you have the entire space being used by a large grocery store, which may require semi deliveries made by semi trucks, then they are proposing that in that scenario, the parking bay along, along West MacArthur could be used for that purposes. We, as the new planning regulations, we also have open space requirements now. So the regulation is 60 square feet per each residential unit, of which 40 square feet needs to be private, and 20 needs to be common. The regulations also allow you to substitute common open space for private open space at a ratio of two to one. The proposals has, 57 of the units have either patios or balconies, and the applicants are requesting a substitution of common open space for private open space. So with that, the required total common space for the project is just under 6,000 square feet, and what they're proposing meets exactly that. And that's provided by the plaza at Adeline Street, the common gallery space on the first level. There's a dog run on the podium level. The applicant will talk a little bit more about that. And of course, the roof deck is that, and that's how you get, that's how they're meeting the open space requirements. The staff report kind of outlines projects' compliance with various cities' general and specific area guidelines. I would like to point mainly to the sidewalk width. The sidewalk width, which is applicable for the site, is 15-foot minimum sidewalk with a three-foot entry public space and an eight-foot clear pedestrian pathway with a four-foot landscaping along the curb. As the project is an adaptive reuse of an existing building, and the entire footprint is retained, it is not possible to create a 15-foot minimum width on all street frontages. So what they, what we have is this. So this, so this is the existing conditions. So on San Pablo and Adeline, nothing changes. On 39th, the pathway is increased from a little over six feet to seven feet, and the landscape area has been increased. If you remember, that's been done because the residential structure is, portion of it is, along 39th Street. And the MacArthur Boulevard, because of the rain garden, will also create a lot more landscaping of 80, 80 feet more. And also, and the clear, and the width is, the pedestrian pathway will remain the same. So it's environmental, the sequel review for this, as a part of that process, like I'd mentioned, a traffic study was done, and I showed you the visual simulations. And on basis of those studies, we have determined that the project qualifies for an infill, an exemptional for infill development. The traffic report, which was attached to your staff report, concluded that there would not be major impacts as a result of the project, but the report included a number of recommendations regarding site circulation, loading, and parking, which have been incorporated as conditions of approval. In addition, this, I'd just like to highlight a couple of conditions which are peculiar to this project. One is that the project will be required to contribute $50,000 towards the Star Intersection improvements. And as I mentioned, they will be required to maintain the rain garden in perpetuity. They will also be required to underground the existing overhead utilities on Adeline and 39th Street. In addition to that, I placed a memo on the dais. This is in response to an email that you may have received from Ms. Ann Chang of Transform, where it looks like this. Essentially, Transform has, well, the applicant applied for what is called a Green Trip certification, and Transform has given this project a conditional approval of that certification, but subject to a few conditions. And the applicant has volunteered to agree to these conditions, and those are the conditions which are in this memo. Ms. Chang is here today, and she will be talking a little bit about what the Green Trip certification is all about, so I'm not going to go ahead and talk about that at this point. So in conclusion, the staff is recommending approval of this project, subject to the conditions of approval in the staff report, as well as the conditions in the memo that I just mentioned. The memo and the, on the second page, also includes an additional condition that staff is recommending regarding loading, and that is for your review. So that concludes my presentation. The applicant does have a presentation. You can ask my questions now or listen to him now.
I have questions for you, if that's okay?
Sure.
Did you review, so the parking requirements on that one overhead slide, or whatever we call it now, was that taking into account the Farron and Pierce recommendations? And because, for instance, there were some spaces that were too small, and you wouldn't be able to get out?
Correct. Correct. So that would, that is primarily for the residential parking. So that would reduce the parking. We did a rough calculation by about three to four spaces.
Okay, so it's not on that calculation?
Right, right, that's not, yeah.
Okay. And another question I have, did you mention that the bike spaces on the floors, were they locked?
No, they were, you mean each floor, whether that is secure?
Yeah.
With like a, like a separate room? No.
Or a way to lock them, or some, like?
There's ways to lock them.
Okay. And then there was another question I had. Did you, did staff feel that the garbage and recycling area was sufficient for both the residential and the commercial uses?
Yes, it meets our requirements.
Okay. And last but not least, can you elaborate a little bit more about how the project will meet the energy efficiency requirement?
I'm going to let the applicant talk about that in terms of what precisely it's going to be doing. So the condition of approval will make sure that those things, at the time of plan check, are, you know, it meets 20. I mean, the idea is not which way, but that it is a 20% reduction, yeah.
Just let me add to that, that when we were developing our new planning regulations, and we were laboring over all these various bonus point categories, the question of energy efficiency was discussed with the chief building official and also with our plans-check engineer, who is quite an expert on all of these kinds of things. And they told me that that kind of calculation is very straightforward. And, you know, it's, they recommended that as a good way to calculate bonus points, because it's easy for them to verify and calculate.
Great, okay.
Quick question. Does the general plan mandate the number of lodge units in new projects?
Number of what units?
The number of lodge units in projects to encourage family?
No. There is no specific number. One of the goals is, you know, among a whole platoon of goals, is that family-friendly projects is encouraged.
Okay, this is obviously not a family-oriented project?
Correct.
Okay, and that's something we're happy with, as far as from a general plan conformance point of view? I mean, I've seen a lot of things in the general plan that wants to promote more families. We have a beautiful school we just approved. I don't see this as being a project for family-oriented Emoryville.
The general plan doesn't mandate that every project be a family project, if that's what you're saying.
And this was a comment that the commission did make at the study session, and the way the applicant has responded is by increasing the number of two and four-bedroom units.
Okay.
And I think the applicant will also talk more about what their model is, you know, their project model is.
Do we have other recent developments that have less than one parking place per unit in Emoryville?
Less than one parking space per unit? These are new regulations. This was not even permitted before.
First time.
This is the first, this is probably the, well, this is the second project that is being reviewed under the new parking regulations.
Right, right.
The first one being ECCL.
What was the first one?
The other one you approved tonight.
The one.
ECCL.
So that's not a residential project, so, yeah.
This is encouraging bicycles. There's one bike spot per unit.
It's in the, as Mira said, it's in the transit hub overlay zone.
Right.
Which reduces the parking requirement by 50%.
Right, that makes sense.
So, and then, of course, the code sets a minimum and maximum, and the minimum and maximum go, both get reduced by 50%. Therefore, the maximum ends up being less than one space per unit. So our code doesn't even allow them to provide as much as one space per unit unless they were to get a conditional use permit to exceed the maximum.
Is there a bike path adjacent to this project that will feed this project? I mean, are we connected to it?
There are bike lanes on Adeline Street, and it's a very heavily-used bicycle route.
Okay.
I guess I have one more quick question. There, I couldn't, it was very unclear as to, so the height of the building is 75 feet, but then on the plan, is there's a parapet, and what is the height of that? I'm guessing.
Well, parapet doesn't count in the height of the building.
Well, I'm just, I'm just trying to gauge what's going on, because then the very, then there's another 10-foot of the roof garden slash elevator, roof garden entrance-exit. So is that, I was, I just don't know what the total height of this building is, because it's not on the plan.
You want to know till the parapet? What's the height?
The only height listed here is roof, 75 feet. So we have also the parapet, also this. So we have also the parapet, also this, there's the elevator entrance and exit to the roof garden, so what's the total height of the building?
Three foot six.
Uh huh. And then the, the.
You need to come up.
Yeah, come on up. So that was three foot six from?
From the top of the roof.
From the top of the roof. And then the elevator shaft and?
Elevator overrun will be 12 to 13 feet over the top of the roof.
Plus 12 to 13 feet for the roof garden area.
As for roof access, maintenance, solar panels, all of that.
Well, there's a garden, well, there's no plants up there.
And then there's the roof deck as well.
Deck, yeah.
Yeah.
Great, thank you. Thanks, Mira. Were there any other questions? I'm sorry. No? Okay, would the applicant love, like to come forward and make a presentation?
Good evening. Rick Holliday. I think I saw most of you in February at the study session. Again, I want to thank you for that opportunity and the feedback. I think we tried to account for a lot of it, and I'll try to get into more detail as to the things we've done. I wanted to just open by saying, I spent a few minutes tonight down at the Emeryville Warehouse, which is about to have its 15th anniversary in 2014. And it, like the MAS building, was a building waiting for a new use that was in disrepair, and people were looking for a way to stimulate Park Avenue, which then was sort of an idea to create a new area and district. And I see the MAS building as another opportunity to take an important part of the Emeryville-Oakland star intersection and really get it on the right track. And I have found, in all instances with your staff, that they're very approachable, they're geared towards asking a lot of questions, but also trying to help find solutions. And I want to make a point to thank Mira and Charlie for just making themselves available and working with our team. Just in sort of general overview of our company, we're an adaptive reuse company. I think I told you that last time, we're about 25 years old. My wife and I did build a house, sorry, it was the foundation for the company. We've always wanted to build community where we are and do something different than just the run-of-the-mill projects. And I just got an email that tomorrow, the Wall Street Journal's running a full spread on a building we did south of Market called The Clock Tower that's just celebrated its 20th anniversary. And they ran 16 really nice photos, interviewed 10 of the residents, and the headline is "A Small Town in an Old Printing Plant." We took great pride in that because we were invited back a few months ago to a 20th anniversary by the residents, and over 20% of the original residents were still there. The Emeryville Warehouse, I found tonight, we actually have, still with 15 years coming up, 25% of the original residents there. And seeing it host the meeting tonight with the mayor, giving the state of Emeryville, was particularly gratifying, knowing what it had been. So I keep the MAS image up there for a reason, because many of the developments, this is the Emeryville Warehouse as it looked about 14, 15 years ago. And these are some completed photos and so on. As some people know, we were going to do surface parking at the Emeryville Warehouse for a portion of it, and we made a larger garage and got the building a little bigger, working with the staff. We ended up doing some row houses. It's not necessarily family, there's some two- and three-bedroom units here, but it was inspired by some work that we saw in Amsterdam along the canals. And I actually had one of these images, the upper left was actually the rendering before the Planning Commission 2005, the lower two are 2007. The building, I would add, is, looks much better now because the landscaping has grown up, it's quite mature. And then this is some of the interior finishes. As it was said earlier, the building at 39th and Adeline, which Mira went through with some images, has sort of come back to life and is a mixed-use building, and it's being developed by someone who I know and like, so I don't want to be critical of it, and I'm, please don't take these comments to be a criticism. But the red area is the commercial. And in many cases, mixed-use buildings have to focus on how do you park the cars, and how do you create a podium, where you can create a big enough plate which you can drop the housing units on to create the environment you're going to create for the housing. So the housing drives most of the decisions, and the retail sort of gets what's left over. And oftentimes, it leaves you with not so much retail and not much mix in the mixed use. And one of the things that we saw when we approached the MAS building redevelopment, it was, we felt it was imperative to save the entire building and truly do a mixed-use where you have a meaningful 25,000 square feet of retail adjacent to residential, rather than, in effect, be more of an afterthought. Across the street at Adeline, the same circumstance occurred. What you had is parking, and what was left was, in effect, that rim that's been around it, which has been a difficult commercial space to get activated. I'm pleased to report, the person who bought the space actually did call me today, and it's somebody I know, and so I think something's going to be happening in there pretty soon. And that's very encouraging, I think. But it is a challenged space, partly because there's no parking, and it's really hard to understand how you'd serve the customers, and it's, the spaces are kind of narrow, there's not a lot of depth in the retail, so it takes a lot of uses out. One of the first uses that was proposed for the MAS building, we saw this from our architect because it had been studied, and as you can see, what they were going to do is put a podium over the entire thing and leave a fairly small retail café out towards the edge adjacent to Adeline and San Pablo. So this is really the way I looked at the site more, is we wanted to preserve the entire facade of the MAS building as a condition, keep the beautiful skylights and the great timber and wood in there, and then really work to create a really vibrant, rich community of entrepreneurs as a community asset, but also an important commercial building that would then support the housing, and the housing in turn would support the commercial, and we'd have real mixed use. So we see this development as an opportunity for us to work with you in a very, very, we think, forward-thinking project, where we're going to do mixed use in a serious way, where there'll be a lot of more organic retail that will be not changed, it will not be single-tenant, it'll be broken up more, and I'll get into that in a moment. The inspiration for some of the retail is kind of obvious, staring us right in the face. We've all been to Market Hall, the use of getting fresh food and fresh vegetables in there, I think, is something that we're getting interest from a handful of bodegas and small grocers. The, probably the best example of where I think we're trying to head is the El Cerrito Natural Grocery on San Pablo, which is just doing a small annex, and they're looking for a possible expansion down here in 2015. So we're excited about our conversations with them. Temescal Alley, we've probably all been to, it's the little horse stalls that are basically maker units that are very exciting. And we've all seen what Bakesale Betty did on the corner when they really created a compelling takeout business. So from that, some of the spaces that we consider commercial are drawing from some real experience. Dave Baker's office just finished a café that's to the left. You see on the lower right is really looking at the rain garden area as we see it. The Adeline Plaza, we think, has a great potential, it's 2,500 feet, which is going to be a great outdoor area. And there's a shot of it in the upper left juxtaposed against some of the thoughts of what we think can happen. The inside of the building, as I said, has got great bones. The last thing I think you'd want to do is shave the roof off, which is what a lot of people had suggested. You have great skylights and wonderful space, and it's sort of calling out for some big cylindrical sort of beer steins, in my opinion. So we've had two brew pubs already start to make inquiry, and we think we can possibly secure one that would also orient towards the Adeline Plaza. The area that's off of the rain garden is about a 7,500-square-foot area, and we think this might be able to be, if you take the roll up door down the center there and imagine something that has some of the elements of Temescal Alley, we could do something very interesting with that. The area in the front that some of you have seen when you come around the corner, we think could, it's about a 4,000-square-foot, might make a great bodega with a café, not unlike what the El Cerrito Grocery is. So as you move around the site, the one is really looking at the rain garden, which I think adds an open space element here that we're grateful for the fact that that's a good place to process stormwater, and we're more than welcome to take up the maintenance of it, because it's going to be an important asset for people that are using the commercial space to be maintained well, and also the residents there. This is the view back towards the Adeline Plaza, which is about 2,500 feet. And the question about the bike lane there, I think it was a good one, that Adeline gets a tremendous amount of bike use, and it's growing by the day. Then down 39th, we have the residential lobby that we've moved over to 39th, and we think that's going to be a nice area as well. So this is looking again at it in site plan. We have three retail areas, retail one, two, and three. One, I sort of consider to be more like the brew pub. Two, my eyes are terrible, I think, which is the area where we might see a grocer and some café, and three might be the makers. But as you may know, you don't really know who your retail tenants are until you have an approval and you start to put together a plan. But we're excited about the prospect. If we can get an approval, we can start having the conversations, taking them more from just preliminary letters of intent, and have people in business in 2015. This is the view from the roof. The question about energy is important. We're going to use very, very heavy solar. We have a lot of skylights up on that roof, but then there's going to be a lot of solar panels as well. Some of the feedback we got in your study session, I want to sort of just review. We had the lobby on the flip side, on the apogee side, and it was suggested we consider 39th, and we considered that suggestion to be a good one, and have made that. We were asked to try to look a little harder at the unit mix, and we've got some larger units, and we picked up some twos. We did go for more energy efficiency and get sort of very active and sort of really using solar, because orientation's building sort of screams out to really get the panels up there and get the energy. We've gone pretty aggressive in terms of bikes. The bikes that we're putting on each floor, we haven't exactly designed the locks, but it's going to be, we're learning from our own residents. We did one of the first bike rooms at the Cannery Project in West Oakland, and it's a really great community bike room. But people really, if they have a pretty good bike, they like it a lot closer, either inside or darn close. So what we see is that each floor, having 21 bikes, kind of having an interesting sort of element around the elevator, which will partly reinforce that we expect people to be using their bikes and to be enjoying this being a transit stop. And so we see that as an important part of the project. We see public art and art being important, and we've been active and participating with the arts community, and looking forward to some of the folks that we've just had some preliminary conversations to add that element, of course. Car sharing is something that we're actually new to. We haven't done any deals with Zip Cars yet, but our initial conversations were very, very positive. They love this location. It's obviously kind of spot-on for a minimum of two cars, and so we think we can secure them pretty easily. We're willing to provide free membership as a way to encourage it, as a meaningful part of people living in the space. We've got, I think, one of the best landscape architects in the Bay Area, if not the country, in Jeff Miller. He's here tonight, and I think for those of you who've seen our work over the last 20 years, it's really a big part of what makes us proud, what we do. And I think our plazas, and even though they're not real large, they're critical to be done well. And I think Jeff can answer any questions you might have about those. So here again, this is sort of referring to the question on loading. The loading will be dictated by the uses to some degree, and we're comfortable with the notion that we're going to have to demonstrate to your planning director that we've got adequate loading once we secure the tenants. Clearly, if we had a 7,000-foot grocer, it would require a different loading than maybe a 4,500-square-foot. And so I think that we've got a way to accommodate all the uses we'd like to have, but the loading will probably be determined once we know the tenants and the mix. Here's again just another view from over at Lane Splitter. They're looking forward to us really helping get more bodies down there and really help make that corner come to life. So with that, I think I'll stop and take questions. Yes, Duffy from Dave Baker's office is here. Dave is in Europe, he's becoming quite the architect, and he was asked to go over there on some professional work. And so we unfortunately don't have him tonight, but I can attest, yes, has been doing most of work. So if your questions are more technically, probably has the answers. Jeff Miller's here. Catherine Tellez from Farron and Pierce is here, and Ann Chang is here from Transform and the Green Trip group that we've been working with. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. This is a public hearing, and we're going to open the public hearing. So anyone who would like to come up and speak, you have three minutes, and then please sign in. Is there anyone here? I think there, I have a speaker cart, Ann. Did you want to?
Good evening, commissioners. Thanks for your great work, and thanks to the planning staff for setting up such a great planning code to enable such a good project. So I'm Ann Chang, I'm the Green Trip Program Director with Transform. And for those who don't know, Transform's been around for just over 15 years. We're a regional nonprofit that works on world-class transit and walkable communities. And so I am proud to present our very first Green Trip conditionally-certified project tonight to this project. We're very excited to be working with Rick Holliday and his team, with Greg. What I provided to you, and I emailed to you as well, and I have more copies for the community, is essentially explaining how the project meets our Green Trip certification standard and how they're doing what is truly innovative traffic reduction and innovative parking strategies. And so you'll see, you know, based on the modeling that we do, the households are expected to drive 61% less than the average Bay Area household. And that's supported in part by the, all the factors you see in the back, on the backside of this project evaluation report. Inventoring, the mix of jobs and homes within a half-mile radius, so very much, you know, the context and the right location are all contributing factors to why this project will truly result in, you know, more growth without gridlock. And so you can see here also that the transit resources are tremendous with 14, just over 1,400 opportunities to get on a bus within a five-minute walk. And on top of that, they're adding now, you know, 40 years of free car-share membership to all eligible drivers, which is phenomenal. The Zip Car, whom we've got a relationship with there, we basically work with them to introduce the concept to the developers, and they're willing to offer spaces within the building and making it an accessible resource for the whole community. So in addition to that, above and beyond, at the bottom corner of the backside, they've also agreed to offer five to 10 bike-share bikes. So, you know, you don't have to have your own bike, you can use the property's bikes. And what I think is also really important is that they're voluntarily willing to report on an annual basis, actual vehicle ownership and driving transit and car-sharing usage for a regional database that we're developing, and essentially helping to, you know, document truly how much vehicle ownership there will be, and to really support projects that are doing these kind of innovative projects, strategies. So I thank you for supporting great projects like this. I think it's really the model of the next generation. I personally, I used to be on the El Cerrito City Council, I would love to see more projects up our way. We'll trade you that for El Cerrito NG. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Marcus Johnson, and I asked Rick if it was possible I could come to speak tonight. And I want to speak about, first of all, let me say that I'm a former commissioner on the Blue Ribbon Commission for the City of Oakland Affordable Housing and Inclusionary Zoning Commission, as well as a lifelong resident of the Prescott neighborhood. And that neighborhood, just so if you're not familiar with it, is located. And that neighborhood, just so if you're not familiar with it, is located west of Mandela, south of Grand Avenue. And it encompasses the BART, West Oakland BART station, which I'm actually working to trying to change the name of to something more appropriate. But I wanted to speak about the central station development that's within the Prescott neighborhood and what it has done to the neighborhood. For me, and I mentioned being in the, as the Commissioner and being lifelong resident because I've been able to see in the neighborhood the change that's occurred through decades of this particular project, central station development brought to the neighborhood. With the diversity that I remember as a kid, it came back. Started experiencing people that are walking now, walking their dogs, running, or just doing cleanups. They're doing all these things. I've had great neighbors before, but I've got some really good neighbors now. And what I've seen, and I watched Central Station go through the entitlement phase to where it actually started being built. What I saw then is what we got. And it's a great project. And from what I could tell, this is going to be a great project as well. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, signal and I'll close the public comments.
Actually, I had a question for Mr. Holliday.
Sure.
Me too. We never had a chance to talk.
Yeah.
I was just curious, do you have other developments where you have less than one parking place per unit?
Come on up to the mic. Yeah, thanks.
It seems like kind of a new idea.
The clock tower is 127 units and we had 75 parking spaces. We did it 20 years ago and people were pretty worried about it. And it's worked out fine. That was for-sale condominiums.
Wow.
I'm feeling, you know, it's ironic, it's sort of, we, with the Transform folks, they're beating us down a little bit on the parking. And we're at the limit of where I'm comfortable. I'd be blunt to tell you that. We're confident when we've looked at the project, we just finished 163 units. It was part of the first phase of Central Station. It was an old cannery. And we have been monitoring people's trips on our own. We were doing this on our own. And they're down over 50% of what they were before they moved there, partly because of its central location, the BART. And more and more people are just using their bike because it's this very, very short ride to West Oakland BART and it's flat. And I just see that you just take about a block and a half up Adeline, you make a right and you go up to McArthur and you're at the nexus of the whole BART system.
Were those market rate units?
Mm-hmm, yeah. So in both cases, so we have actually excess parking where we were one-to-one in the cannery. But no, I feel we're good. But we're, I think we are on the cutting edge of some new policy, which is really trying to get people comfortable using transit, using their bikes, walking. And hopefully, I think one of the things we've done here, if we've got that commercial space the way we think it's going to be, you'll be down in that space a lot and conducting a lot of your life there, meeting people and doing work, so.
Where are the laundry rooms?
We have, I'm going to leave this, yeah, we have, we always design the unit so we can have laundry inside, both rental and for sale. And I was just looking back, every once in a while we'll put a small community laundry room, just as, but we're not, I don't think we're going to here.
Mr. Holliday, some questions. Buzz, are you done?
Yeah.
Okay. I see, I mean, I love the project. I see a conflict with service and trash. You have a nice lobby. And here you have service, trash, and loading in front of that lobby. I see a conflict happening there. Plus, I don't think you, if you're going to attract the right retail tenants, I think they're going to be very, very concerned about loading and parking. And typically, if you have retail, you also have, you have a trash compactor that serves a grocer-type user. And I don't see any space for any of those type of necessary ingredients to really draw somebody like a grocer.
I think for the larger grocers, you're right. I think that, I wouldn't profess that we've done a lot of mixed use. We've done 5,000 and 8,000 square feet of mixed use in a recent project on Third Street. We did, we actually did, we actually did a fresh and easy grocery store and two restaurants. And I can defer to Yes here for a moment, but I think we're okay. But I think we're going to end up with smaller tenants, they're going to be a little more organic, and I don't think they're going to put the heavy demand on the deliveries. At least I think that that's what we're trying to find, rather than the larger, heavier users, so.
So where will the dumpsters be for the complex?
Can I show you the plan here?
Sure.
Hello, everybody. My name is Yes Duffy. I'm a designer at David Baker.
Go ahead and speak right into the mic.
Hello, my name is Yes Duffy. I'm a designer at David Baker and Partners Architects. I can pull up the plan.
I'm looking at A2.0.
Yep. So there, what we're showing now in the plan, there are three chutes. There will be trash compaction at the garbage chute. And the trash then gets taken out usually with what they call a Big Joe. It's basically an electric pallet jack. And that'll be taken to the street edge on 39th and loaded into the garbage truck.
So physically, where will they be placed for pickup? I'm just looking at the lobby entry.
Right.
And then they go out the doors to the north?
Yes. And they go out the doors.
And don't you see a conflict there between a gracious elegant lobby entry and trash two times a week? Ideally, you wouldn't have that at the main entry to an elegant complex, I wouldn't think. Is there any other alternative you explored for that stuff?
Well, you, you don't have, you know, it's not adequate to have the garbage truck stopping on Adeline Street, right? And picking up the trash there. 39th Street makes a lot of sense, I think. And also for the lobby as well, you know, there's bike access there. I think that, we did a little bit of a, we did a rendering of that view, just to study it a little bit more.
Can you just pull that microphone a little closer to you because we all need to hear what you're saying? Sorry, there we go.
I'll show you a rendering of a study that we did of the adjacency of the lobby and the trash exiting. It's not intuitive at all. Select, what am I selecting? The lobby is set back about six feet from the property line there, so there's a vestibule for the residents to gather and enter at the building there. I think there's adequate space between the trash room doors and the lobby entry to be able to not just be butting up against each other. What you see here would be where the service trash would be removed. What you see here is the lobby entry.
Do you have one large door instead of two, as shown?
There are two doors, actually. Well, could we have one? Yes.
There are.
I don't know about that.
Which, what's true?
Sorry. What is true are two three-foot doors that both swing out and open. It's also what you see in the plan. Typically, what we do, and it doesn't really show very well here, but we have also a glass, we also have a glass transom above.
So is there any way to explore relocating service trash recycling all the way to the east? Playing with that so that it's further away from the lobby, perhaps towards the property line at the east? You have to play with the ramp, but you seem to have other areas in which to place this along 39th Street. I'm not debating 39th Street as being the right choice, but I'm just trying to get that lobby area more elegant, more inviting, because you're not showing it on a trash day. And the reality is that 105 people are going to generate a lot of trash and it's going to fill up two dumpsters, you know? And there's going to be smells, there's going to be things associated with it. It just takes away from that elegance, from the experience of entering a nice project. I would relegate it to the far property line if you could, you know, just put it towards the garage, bury it there and.
If we could hide it completely, that would be perfect, right? I think the biggest issue, I think, that was driving this adjacency is the trash chutes have to go all the way up through the building. And so up above, there's this hub of the bike storage, as well as the elevator and the stair. And those things work well bundled together as the, you know, amenity space.
You can offset the chute somewhat, right? Just to get it further away?
Well, then we get into the ramp.
Okay.
We get into the ramp issues there.
Okay, I'll let you solve it. I just think there's a conflict there. It's too nice a project to have that conflict, in my opinion.
Thank you.
All right. I would add, we share your concern. We think we can manage it on two counts. One, we have a project, I was just thinking, that had this similar condition where we renovated the old Don Lee Building in San Francisco into movie theaters and housing. So it's commercial. And we had to have the residential lobby off of Myrtle, which was a pretty unpleasant street. It was adjacent to O'Farrell. And we did have to do the trash over there. Trash picked up in the morning, typically, in the early morning. And it really, it's more on the management company to do that well, to get it out there, get it picked up and get the things back in. But I hear your comment, we'll see if we can improve it.
Could you tell me also about the nesting studio concept? Have you used that before in projects?
Yeah, we have, we have.
And it's acceptable from the building code standpoint, without light and ventilation, serving a bedroom? You can still call it a bedroom?
Yes. Well, I think, no, I think it's, I'm sorry, I'll let Charlie go in a minute. We have issues in terms of marketing. If you're a tenant, you come into a unit of ours, and particularly when we've done adaptive reuse, we have some pretty untraditional spaces sometimes because there's, and so we've ended up in many circumstances where bedrooms don't have traditional air and light. So obviously, we can't call them bedrooms. But we found that if someone looks at it and they go, yeah, I'm comfortable sleeping here and living here, we get good enough ventilation in the building that the unit ventilation's good and people are fine with it. But we can't call it a bedroom. So it's a marketing issue.
Right. It's a code issue.
It is a code issue as well.
Right. And I believe, I mean, I'm not a building code expert, but I know that Rick and his team have met with the building division a couple of times, I think. And I don't know if that issue of the nested studios was specifically discussed, but I know that the building division has kind of overviewed the whole plan. They did not flag that as a problem.
Well, there's a new Berkeley Central building in downtown Berkeley that has one and two-bedroom units that just have sort of glass walls that don't go all the way up to the ceiling, separating the bedroom from the main space. And the bedroom doesn't have its own outside window.
There's a certain proximity requirement to a window, though, for light and ventilation?
No. In the, in.
Then it's probably not a legal unit.
May I address it? So at David Baker's office, we've done this numerous times. It's been kind of a, almost a proprietary David Baker thing, the nested unit, I think, because it's worked very well. The thing is, and what you didn't really see in the nested unit plan, is that it's a low wall that separates the bed from the kitchen and from the living room. And so it's a low wall and you have a dining table up against it. And so you actually get a line of sight from the bed to the window, which is very important. And that's not written in the code, but it's very important to us. And so the bed, as a living space, as that room gets a living place, it gets the appropriate legal code required light and air. Because there's no door, there's no wall.
Can you speak, oh, come on back, come on back. Could you speak a little bit to the four-bedroom units? And maybe it's just a mistake, but there's no windows in a couple of the bedrooms, so.
That's a mistake? That's my mistake.
Okay.
I'll pull them up.
That's good, because we want windows.
Yes, we want, we want, yes, we want windows. And another thing that we want is corner living rooms often, too. And that's an opportunity here.
So I've done it every which way to Sunday, even with possibly having windows in those units. And I can't quite make your perspectives and your section views work. So how, has that really been thoroughly designed? Or is this more, are the section views more sort of what they're going to look like?
It's very, very close to what it's going to look like. What I've, what we've done in designing the windows is that when you see a large square window, those windows are for living rooms. Living rooms will get that amount of light and air. And at the bedroom windows, it's a typical window. It's a, it's three foot wide, it's eight feet tall. And those are, those are the typical bedroom windows. And so in composing the elevations and the perspectives, yes, those windows are the windows that we expect to work.
Floor-to-ceiling windows, basically.
That's what we are showing.
Great.
And the nested units each have their own decks, is that correct? Did I understand that? Because I don't understand why it says patio at podium level. That, do they have?
So at podium level, there's the patio.
Oh, and then the rest are decks?
And then up above, there's decks.
They're all decks, okay.
Yep.
And on the studios, where occurs, do they occur every other or is that?
Exactly. They occur every other. So half of the studios have a balcony. The other half do not.
Oh, which brings me to another point. Can you talk a little bit about the dog run and how that would work with people and their balconies right there and smells and dogs and, okay.
We found in the Emeryville Warehouse, the Emeryville Warehouse is evolved, but more recently in the Cannery, out of 160 residents, we have at least 100 people that have dogs. Dogs are populating our industrial regenerated cities at rates that are unbelievably amazing. So one of the things we found is that a lot of people are sharing dog walking, watching other people's dogs, part of building a community. So our, we have some units in the Emeryville Warehouse that orient to a very small little alley, almost. And we found that people had their own little private, I think about five feet, but then there was a little run that's become in effect like a private little dog run. And it's really popular and well-used. So what we're trying to do here is we're going to rent those early, those lower units to people that have dogs. We're going to drive that and we're going to let people know that, no, there'll be other dogs, there'll be some. But the other thing we have, sort of drawn on one of your business owners who's done well, is that the woman who runs every dog has its day, has got probably the best sort of dog facilities around. And we're going to take her experience and utilize it there to deal with the odors.
I have a question for you while you're up there.
Yeah.
Have you explored, and maybe this is a question for Anne, have you explored the AC Transit Easy Pass?
We looked at it for the Cannery and the problem we had is we tried to, this was a little bit of a marketing thing, we gave people a few months and it just, the buses really aren't terribly reliable and their service has been thinned out a little bit. So we haven't seen that it's been, I think maybe Anne can answer it better, but I think that ride sharing and bicycles and BART are really what's going to drive the, and Emery Go Round, I think people may use.
How about scooters and motorcycles, just if you don't mind if I chime in for that, if you're going to go on to another.
I'm going to defer this one.
Actually, I just see potential for this because of the, and I totally agree, especially some of the routes that AC Transit takes, kind of meander all over the place. But I think San Pablo has a lot of potential for AC Transit. And I think one of the things that I want to do, this is my last night on the Planning Commission, and my next thing that I want to get involved in is more transit and especially working with AC Transit to get better bus service for Emeryville. So I see this as a really, it's a fantastic program if they have good bus routes that accompany it. And I think we can maybe achieve that here.
Well, so the way Green Trip certification works is that because of the place type, is we essentially have different categories of place types, and then that's what drives what the certification thresholds are. And given the urban neighborhood place type, therefore, the project has to do two out of three, essentially Green Trip-approved traffic reduction strategies. And so the three, so the two that Holliday has gone with are the 40 years of free transit passes for all eligible drivers and then the 100% unbundled parking, which the city code already requires. And so between those two, I think, we set up the system to give the flexibility to the developer to determine which of those makes the most sense for their project. And so, you know, we definitely brought the information, made sure that he knew about it, but ultimately, it was their choice to do, you know, what they saw worked best for their project, so.
Do you have any experience with other projects where you?
Yeah, actually, I'd say, so we've certified 13 I, yeah, actually, I'd say, so we've certified 13 projects in, in the Bay Area at this point, and I'd say 10 of them have done either EZ Pass, which is the AC Transit, or Eco Pass in the South Bay. And it's because they have this incredible discount of 90% off, where you can buy an annual pass for $120, rather than, you know, typical monthly pass costs $150. But you have to buy 100, so it's the ultimate Groupon, as I like to say. But, so, you know, definitely, you know, this, this, the, the car sharing is catching on, and I'd say the network's increasing. Zipcar now has over 600 cars just in the Bay Area alone, and it's a national network. So I think, you know, there's great transit access, and obviously, people will figure it out on their own. You know, it's, it's, again, we, we left that flexibility up to the developers, so, yeah.
Commissioners, my name is Greg Pascoli. I work with Rick Holliday, and I worked with Ann on our green trip certification. And so I did some of the analysis of the trade-offs between those three measures, and I just wanted to speak to that a little bit because we looked pretty closely at it because we'd actually looked at it at Central Station, which a few people have mentioned. It's a development of 400 units. It will be 1,200 eventually. But it is .8 miles, which Google Maps says is a 16-minute walk from West Oakland BART. It turns out 3,800 San Pablo is also .8 miles, and Google Maps says a 16-minute walk to MacArthur BART, which I would say is a much safer and more pleasant walk than the walk through West Oakland. And it turns out, we surveyed the residents, and we estimate there's about 1,000 residents at Central Station. We, we did two things. When we were pretty aggressively marketing free transit passes, because we were trying to throw it in as a sort of a bonus to home buyers. We also surveyed our existing, sort of, it wasn't up to the full 1,000 residents at that point, but that roughly 1,000 people. I'm pretty sure the number that the project manager who did that, he said it was about seven people came back saying that they would opt in. So seven out of 1,000 residents. So when we looked at 3,800 San Pablo, we said, "Well, it's the same distance. It's a nicer walk. We think we're going to have a lot of people who use their bicycles to get around." And, you know, part of the justification for moving the lobby to 39th was that it's closer to the 40th Street Transit Hub, which is where the free Emeryville Go-Round passes on its way to MacArthur BART and also to destinations in Emeryville and Berkeley. And we said, "Well, there's already a pretty good free bus that provides access to BART and to a lot of destinations. Berkeley Bowl is one of the destinations." We just didn't really see that that added the value that justified the cost, particularly when we'd had such low reception to it in Central Station.
So I guess my thinking on that is, you know, if this is something that can be rolled into the rent, one of the things we're facing right now is the Emery Go-Round is such a success, it's kind of become a victim of its success, that it's overcrowding, and, and, you know, now we're looking at, how do we get more buses, and how do we deal with the transportation? And really, AC Transit really can't compete with a free bus. It's not going to. But if the, the cost of the EZ Pass were rolled into the monthly rent, you know, it's a $10 a month kind of thing. And I think if people had, you know, another option for free, free bus service, they would take it more. And I think it's kind of the catch-22, you got to have the ridership before you can get the bus routes, and you can't, you know. And it's, it's not working very well right now, but I'd sure like to see this project incorporate the EZ Pass, and then everybody work with AC Transit to give us one bus for Emeryville that really, really serves Emeryville, not just passes through Emeryville. And the one that I'm particularly thinking of is better bus service for the F Route that would take us directly to San Francisco, directly to Berkeley, streamline that trip a little bit.
John, I hear you really loud and clear. I, I think that, what, what I, what I think, it is chicken or the egg. And I think that if you know the history of our company, we would like to work with you. I think making it, given, we had the option, and I think we made the right option for now. But I think that we'd like to be perhaps offering that with a successful service. And usually, if you've done it right, the tenant's almost paying for it because you can get a little rent anyway. So, but I think that it's, it's a slippery slope buying all those passes and then trying to push people into those buses. So, thank you.
I had a question about the fact that it's a five-story wood-framed building.
Mm-hmm.
Is that something new?
Hmm, no, that, that's not, it's not being done a lot, but it's been done. Yeah, we've done one. We did one on Petrow Hill, actually, 15 years ago.
Well, that long ago?
Yeah, yeah.
Does it require special structural work, or?
You have to use, yeah, yeah. You're, you're using bigger wood members, and, and you have to smart structural engineer. We have one.
What's the height of the garage, first-floor garage?
I think it's about 20 feet.
Once you get up to the ramp, yeah?
Um, is it?
20 feet?
20 feet, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, 20 feet.
And then the second floor, too?
No, I'm sorry, it's 10 and then 10, roughly.
Oh, 10 and 10.
Yeah. So the total of the garage, about 20 feet.
So that, yeah, the, there's a option two for the loading, for a little 18-foot box truck to go in? I don't, how's that going to happen? It's not really possible.
We're not going to have a tenant that will require an 18-foot box loading truck.
Well, I mean, I'm thinking of like a U-Haul truck is probably what. Maybe the architect could come up, in terms of the loading issue and... Yeah, and just how that's going to work? Because we have that one loading space on 39th. We have a possibility of another on 40th. And then for getting in and out, is that?
Yeah, and I think our loading requirements really are going to be determined by who our tenants end up being, because an 8,000-square-foot grocery store is going to require larger trucks. Then, say, we don't populate that space with a grocery store, it might be a yoga studio that is going to need zero trucks. And so our approach, and as we've discussed with Miru, has been that we want to remain flexible, but say that here are three locations that we've identified where different sizes of loading can be accommodated. So inside of the garage, there's a loading space that meets the City of Emeryville requirement for a small loading space. And we're making certain accommodations to make sure that it's accessible and maneuverable to a truck of that size. That on 39th, then, for trucks that are higher, you know, as long as we don't have major loading demand, that 39th loading space would be appropriate for, you know, FedEx and UPS, who are never going to drive into a garage anyway, but we can at least get them out of the street so they're not double parking by providing that space. And that that space might also be just the right size. In fact, probably as big or bigger than we would need for most of the uses we anticipate, but for a grocery. And if we got a grocery, then we'll look at that MacArthur space. But we've, we've kind of laid out here three spaces of three different sizes that we feel can meet, you know, any combination of different needs. And we, you know, are absolutely willing to work with your, you know, professional planning staff to do what is going to be right for the unit, or the tenants that we eventually line up.
Do you get a chance to look at the Farren and Peer study and, and their recommendations? And are you willing to?
We did, and as I under-
It goes into consideration. There seems like there's some good ones in there.
As I understand their recommendation, it's that the 39th Street loading space, and what Miru actually showed earlier, which was sort of an evolution of that, is sufficient to accommodate most uses, but in the circumstance that we have a larger use, like a grocery.
I think it was also needed to be extended as well, if I'm not mistaken.
Is that so?
I didn't hear that, I'm sorry.
That it needs to be extended as well and made larger?
Right. So all the recommendations in the traffic report are conditions of approval.
Okay, and you're, yeah, all right.
And we're okay with that, and, you know, we appreciate staff's willingness to work with us to do what fits the project.
Build it, of course.
So Vanessa, are you concerned about residences moving in, moving out? I mean, a moving truck's pretty large. I don't think this is a moving truck footprint that we see in option one.
Probably pickup truck or something, yeah. I'm thinking maybe more, and also, the, the last part of what I was talking about is looking at the Farren and Peer study and the conditions of approval, and if they were feeling comfortable about the, the additional, those conditions of approval, and were they able to manage them? Yeah. Okay. Anyone? Any other comments? No? Okay. I...
I guess I could make some general comments, is that?
I want, yeah, I want to, go ahead.
I, I think this is a great, great, great project. As I said, this is my last night as a planning commissioner, my, my last thing to look at. And what a way to go. This is, this is fantastic. I really love what you're doing. I love the adaptive reuse. I, I think the way you use the height, the way you've done things, the green trip is a real bonus. Everything that you're doing is, the choice of materials. I think this is really going to be a significant change for San Pablo, and along with the other things that are going on, coming up soon. I think it's really going to change the area. Thank you for the work that you did. I think the architects did a great job on this one. I would like to see the AC Transit EZ Pass as a condition of approval. And I say that because I think we have to get to the point that people are using AC Transit, and we do have to work with AC Transit to get routes that people will actually use. But I just don't see, that'll never happen when you have the Emery Go-Round, that people can ride for free. And we just have to achieve that critical mass where people can walk out their door and get on any bus that comes by and, and do it at a very low cost. And the EZ Pass is such a phenomenal deal for what it costs and what it provides, that if we can just tie the two together, I think we can really make our transit system work better.
I, I appreciate this project very much. I think it has a lot of positive aspects to it. I, on the other hand, think it is a little bit packed in, especially in the studio area, and just feels a little bit barracks-y. And you have beautiful projects other places, and there's not a lot of green space in this one at all. And I'd like to see more of that, maybe in the dog run. It was, I think, in the study session, we were all hoping that there would be some kind of, something to look down upon with the large expanse of the MAZ roof. And although, I think we're going to have those solar panels, I guess, if that's what we're doing, that's great. And, but I'm not, there's, there's, everything's very, very tightly packed in there. It doesn't have the feel of, say, the warehouse. And so as much as I love many of your projects, I think this one is not quite up to snuff. And also, could we have a laundry room? Since these studio units are so small, I'd like to make that as a possible condition of approval. I think that makes sense for people who are going to be having bicycles and need to not be schlepping large bags of laundry to wherever the nearest laundromat. So I think that that's important. And I have serious doubts that the garbage and recycling are going to be large enough, and how are they going to be accessed by the, the larger business units? I guess they're going to have to go around in the front, so, on the street with their own, I guess, smaller bins. So I'm not sure how that's going to work with something like a bodega. So I, I don't know if we can make, but I guess it, it meets the city's minimum, as stated, for...
For what? I'm sorry?
Businesses and residents, that garbage unit enclosure?
Uh, yes, yes.
And other than that, I really appreciate the reuse of the building and the idea of bringing community together, and the thought of possibly having some kind of businesses that open out onto the, the rain garden is wonderful. So all in all, I'm pretty excited about the project, so, thank you.
Well, I think it's interesting and unusual, and it's really the first time I've seen a development here in Emeryville that has so many studio units in it. And I think they probably make a lot of sense with reduced parking, because there'd be younger people living here, and they'd be less likely to have to have a car. And interesting to see how it works out. There are no plans in this set of these live-work spaces. I don't know how big they are, because they're bigger than the studio, because they seem to have a loft in them, but it would be nice to see what they look like, actually. Other than that, I think it's a great project.
Did the young lady want to say anything?
Oh, thank you.
We passed over you, I don't know how.
My, well, I, I tend to agree with most of the comments of the other commissioners, but the way that I feel about the project, I really am, I'm excited about how the exterior elements activate the surrounding streets. I mean, I'm really interested to see how the retail will hopefully activate San Pablo Avenue and Adeline, which are very much needed in that location. So I have, you know, high expectations and high hopes for, for that. And along the Rain Garden Street on West MacArthur, I think that's a really great use there. It just, the only, I would say, the only downside, it just seems that the clumping of the units, it just seems a bit out, out of balance with what you have going on outside. I mean, it's such an amazing project on the exterior. I would just hope to see that carry through on the interior design. And I think it's getting there with the dog run and some of the open spaces. I think there needs to be more of that, though, on the interior. It just, it just seems like once you go in the lobby, you're in a different type of space than you were, which was, when you're outside, which seems to be so much more exciting. So I wish I had more positive things to say about the interior design, but...
Well, I, it's a great project, and it's a wonderful site. You're literally at a crossroads, which is a, it's interesting how you're, you're activating that, that area, which is kind of marginal at this point, but getting better all the time. I, I, my big concerns are the unit mix, 57% studios, and I'm including the nesting studios, which are still studios. I really wish you had bigger units. I see the migration of people out from San Francisco coming to Emeryville to want to start families. So I, I see people who can't afford San Francisco gravitating to Emeryville to start families, and this would not be an option for them. The unit mix really leaves a lot to be desired, and I realize it's a, it's a development project and has to pencil out, but you're cramming a whole lot into this, this project. The loading conflict, trash, it compromises the size of the lobby. The lobby's, from the elevation, from the perspective, looks pretty elegant, but in reality, if you look at the footprint, it's pretty small. But I, I think it needs some work, but I think it's a great project, and I commend you for investing in this location.
So one question on the, the studio units, the, not the nested. Those, so those do not have a washer dryer? Is that correct? Or they do have?
I thought you said they all have.
Need to come up to the mic, please?
It's probably the fridge.
That's the fridge. So the washer dryer for this unit? The washer dryer for this unit is not shown in this unit. You're right. There, we have a unit like this where we can fit a washer dryer in there. We're not showing that here.
Where?
So these units, these units, what you see now, John, the reason there's also an error in the windows is that these are separate from the building model. They're the exact dimensions, and they fit perfectly in that model, but they're, they're separate.
So there will be a washer dryer in there?
Yes, we can fit one, I believe. I'm not 100% sure about that. I think we have a, a unit like this that can fit a washer dryer in there, but I'm not 100% sure.
And you have no, you haven't even counted the live-work units in your unit count? And you have three of them here, and there's no plans for them?
That is correct.
Why don't you count it as a unit?
I don't know the answer to your question.
Well, I can tell you that under the planning regulations, it doesn't count as a dwelling unit.
It doesn't?
No. It's a live-work unit, but it's not a dwelling unit. It's a commercial use.
Oh.
I, I brought the same issue up to David Baker. I said, "David, why aren't we including the live-work units?" He said, "We don't include those in the count." I said, "Okay."
And you calculate residential density, you don't include live-work units?
Thank you.
Well, I would, I would move approval of this with the conditions, two conditions, additional conditions of approval. One being that there is a common laundry room put in the building somewhere, and then the other is that AC Transit- somewhere, and then the other is that AC Transit EZ Passes be provided, even if it's a period for two years, just so we can get started on better transit.
Well, if every unit has a washer dryer, and he includes them, it's not just a connection, the unit is in there, why would anybody use a common laundry?
If that is the case, but it's sounding like it's not the case, in the smaller...
May I suggest a modified condition?
Sure.
That either every unit have a washer and dryer, or a common laundry room be provided.
That's even better. That's perfect.
Sold. What about the unit mix?
I'm fine with the unit mix. I think it's, I like that there's, that they accommodated the four bedrooms. That's the first four bedrooms I've seen. I think that's fantastic. And then you look at 1,600 square foot, I think, for the four bedrooms, it's like, that's a sizable unit compared to a lot of things that you're going to see anywhere. And the fact that there are four-bedroom units, I think that's great. And, you know, how this, where this building is, it is going to attract young people and older people.
I don't think it's people wanting to start a family are going to move into this building. I don't think that's what the market is. You know, with somebody just out of college, has a good job, and gets their own apartment.
Got 3,000 bucks a month.
I think the studios are barrack-like. I actually really like the nesting. I think that's a good solution. I'm not totally pleased with the amount of studios, but either. It's kind of like a hotel or possible dorm room or something.
Like a micro-tel, you know, like the micro-units that you see in the city.
Come on up.
Thank you. There's two points I think I would like to enforce, is we had a meeting at the building, some of you may have been there, and all of the comments were about getting that building animated, more eyes on the street, security, security, security. And quite honestly, younger people are willing to take more of a chance on a changing neighborhood, put their eyes on the street, and the commercial spaces are important. And I hear you a lot, it's frustrating, but your comments are correct, and the criticisms are legitimate. We're balancing, obviously, many, many variables here, trying to preserve a meaningful building, meet a number of the code conditions, get the unit mix that can work. And these buildings aren't micro-units, they're 450 to 500 square feet. That's, you know, San Francisco did approve recently 270 square feet. And I do believe that part of what people are craving is community. And community means you go to public places. That's why Europe is so livable. The units are small, but the streets and the outdoor spaces are worth being in. And what we want to do here is create that building is a really rich mixture of commercial entrepreneurs, where you'll want to be there a lot of your time, and you'll have eyes on the street, and you'll be a really important gateway between Oakland and Emeryville. It is a different project than you would normally expect if it was just a residential project walking in the door with 1,000 square feet of retail. We're trying to really create a mix of uses that's rich, that's transit-oriented. So I'll say that, and I do appreciate the motion, and we could live with those conditions. Thank you.
I would second that, then.
Are you ready for the roll call?
Ready.
Okay, so this is with the conditions as amended by staff, and...
All the conditions amended by staff.
And then these two new conditions, that either every unit have washer and dryer, or a common laundry room will be provided, and AC Transit EZ Passes for two years. All right.
Two years, you said?
Two years, right. That was Commissioner Sherman's motion.
Is that with, okay, yeah, fine.
All right, on the motion, Commissioner Sherman.
Aye.
Commissioner Steinberg.
Aye.
Commissioner Tan.
Aye.
Vice Chair Cardoza.
Aye.
And Chair Kummerly.
Aye.
Five ayes, the application is approved. This decision may be appealed to the city council within 15 days.
Great, thank you very much. I look forward to...
Going to the brewery.
Going to the bodega. Do you have any commissioner comments? Okay, well, next meeting, we hope that John and Stephen show up for their roast, and meeting's adjourned.